Thirty, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda.
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The next item is to meet the applicants for the Pier Forty-four Building Options and Feasibility Study Committee. Just to summarize a little bit, I think all of you know that applied for this committee, we purchased this land and the building back in the spring. It was a big, important purchase for the town of Situate, and one we want to make sure that we do the right thing with. So it was suggested at town meeting and voted that we form a committee to come up with ideas. The more people involved, of course, the more minds involved, the better off it is for everybody. So the committee would be formed and would study the various options, or new options that have, maybe things that haven't even been thought about yet, and get, come back to the selectmen with a list of suggestions. And to that end, tonight's the first night of interviewing applicants for that committee. We're so impressed with the caliber of the people that have applied, going through the list and go through the resumes, that it's a credit to the town, I think, that so many people with such backgrounds have volunteered. So what I'm gonna do is just ask, as I call out your name, if you're, some people weren't able to come tonight, and they'll be interviewed at a later date, or we may, this meeting's being taped, so the applicants, the applicants that are here and do come before the board will be on tape, which may be given to the other two selectmen who aren't able to be here right now to view, so they'll be brought up to date also. Having said that, what I'd like to do is call up, in order, I guess it's alphabetical order, I think, the interested parties that come up, just give us your name and a very brief synopsis of why you'd like to go on the committee, and anything else you might seem, you might think pertinent to this appointment. So having said that, is Doug Anderson here? Doug is here. Doug, would you mind coming up and just introduce yourself? We have your application, and we also have your resume, but if you could just expand on that, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug Anderson, resident of Situate for seven and a half years, Sheri Way, off of Summer Street, near Indian Winds, that far west side of town. For the past two and a half years, I've been working for a company that basically evaluates buildings, as one of the many functions that the company does, in terms of commercial real estate transactions, kinds of things. I have that expertise at my call. I'm the manager of the Building and Accessibility Code Group within the firm. I've been there two and a half years. I've been in the code business for fifteen-odd years. I love living in this town. I grew up in the South Shore, and this has always been one of my favorite places. I moved, we moved here from the city, seven or eight years ago. Like to donate some of the expertise. I would envision the process being two parts. One is evaluation of the physical plant itself, what kind of shape is the building in, mechanically, physically, you know, roofing, code, everything else. And the second would be what can be used for. And they, somewhat two different parts to that, but they do go hand in hand, because whatever the change of use is, obviously has code impacts. So I think we can offer that particular, as I said, that particular expertise, and I'm looking forward very much to working on it. It's a great location.
It is. That's where we got it.
Yeah, I know, a smart move.
We are limited in some respects, and as the committee's formed, you'll be, the committee will be formed on what we can use it for. We can't build a water slide there.
Understood, yeah. There are certain, there are certain obligations under, under the ADA, obviously, among other things, that the town will be obliged to spend money on, whether it's desired or not. But, on the other hand, it's already a place of assembly, and that helps.
Yep, absolutely.
So, that helps.
Thank you. Questions for the board? Comments, questions?
I just had one quick comment or question. I forgot to bring this up earlier. If you all who are here today getting interviewed, could you just wait until the end after your interview? Just don't, don't just leave, because there might be something that comes up during the other questions and discussions that we might want to ask you another question on, or something like that.
Absolutely. Thanks.
The only question I had was availability of meetings. Do you have to travel much with your job?
Not that much. I've got someone working for me now, so I send her on the trips.
Okay, great.
It's good experience, so, I mean, every now and then. I mean, most of the trips are like Midwest, DC, occasionally West Coast, but not that often.
No, it just came to me now as you were going through.
That's a good question. Yeah, it's a good question.
Thank you. That was all, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Ned Baldwin?
Yes.
Ned, would you come up and just kind of introduce yourself? We have your application, and we have your resume, and if you could just give us anything that you think would be in addition to this, would appreciate it.
My name is Ned Baldwin. I live at Six, Wardleberry Lane. I've been a Situate resident for about three years. I have an urban planning degree and a master's in business degree, and have been involved in some similar efforts through the Urban Land Institute, where the Urban Land Institute has been brought in by the ones I've been involved in, the City of Salem, and the MBTA to look at sites that they own and are trying to determine what to do with. And I envision this as a process slightly similar to that, but being in my own town was something that I had a personal interest in.
All right, questions for the board?
I'm good.
Again, a lot of times the resumes tells us all we have to need, all we need to know before you ever get here, but we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for having me.
So he can see you face to face and say hello. Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, as Rick said, sticking around till the end, would appreciate it. Patrick Burke. I thought Patrick Burke earlier. John Carr. John.
Thank you, Jim.
How are you?
Pretty good. I'm sure we recognize that I'm not American. I'm an Englishman.
That's, we won't hold that against you at all.
Thank you.
I just, I just got back from there, as a matter of fact.
Big one.
I just got back from England.
Good.
Go ahead.
Moved here about thirteen, fourteen months ago. Live on Clap Road, West End. Love the town already. Wonderful place. Retired now. Wife is American citizen, and so are kids. Briefly, I was chief executive officer of Heritage Agency in Wales, which is on the left-hand side of the British Isles. And we were responsible for preservation, conservation of historic structures, but also for the rehabilitation of historic structures for mostly public use. After that, I went to spend fifteen years as a consultant, involved in the rehabilitation of buildings, mostly for community and charitable use. They range from huge structures to very small cottages, mostly of the form of public building type. And I'm interested in this particular job, because that building down on Pier Forty-four seems to me to have an enormous number of possibilities to it. I'm not going to enumerate them, because I want to be able to pick your brains. It seems to me that we need to not reach any sort of conclusions at an early stage, that there are many, many possible options to the building, but the transcending point must be that it's got to be for community use, for public benefit.
Thank you. I think it's important, and we all have a, we all have our little ideas, I guess, on what it could be used for, but I think it's so important that whoever's on this committee go in with an open mind, and, you know, and that's so, in my mind, that's so important, anyway. And we all, maybe, as I said, we all have little preconceived notions of what we'd like to see there, but I think it's so important that we can win, whoever on that committee goes in, and us also, with no, with no hard, fast, concrete ideas, so.
I agree. Just if I could jump in, you might want to remind the, you know, people that are here, and again, you know, next time we meet them, that John just touched on it, but that's what the T said, you know, right from the get-go, that it has to remain open to the public, public access. And, you know, you just touched on that, so.
Well, a bit more than that, perhaps?
Excuse me?
What is public access, which?
That it's, that we couldn't make.
Public benefit as well. Public benefit as well.
Couldn't make a private mariner, and it has to be open to everybody.
Right, absolutely.
Questions for the board?
No, it's good.
John, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Rocco. Rocco Carrabis.
How are ya? Rocky Carrabis, twelve Douglas Hill Drive in Situate, here in Situate, I've been here eight years, and I've run the senior, it's the senior committee for, this is my second term. And I think we should keep in mind that the seniors in this town are kind of being, not pushed aside, but they're being forgotten. And I think this would be a good spot for the senior center. That's in my estimation. And that's all I have to say. I'm a retired operating engineer, fifty-four years, and I've seen a lot of things come and go. Like I say, I'm just a young sprout in this town, but I think we should try to weigh the matters of what we can do for the seniors. Thank you.
Any questions for Rock?
Thank you.
No, Rocco, thank you. Thank you. Donna Chase. Donna, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, we received your application, and, you know, we know you from town, but if you could just fill us in on any other thoughts you might have, it'd be appreciated.
I moved to Situate in nineteen ninety-one, and have lived here continuously since. I have been active in the town since nineteen ninety-three as a real estate agent. My real estate company is actually based in Norwell, but I live on Situate Avenue in Situate, and it's always been a base of my business. I have a very strong love for the town, having lived in many other towns in my lifetime, and I felt that it was important for me, with the background that I have, to work with a group that would work to the benefit of the town, to enhance that particular piece of property. I think, and we've all agreed on this, that because of where it's located, it's such a focal point to the town, it's really a statement to the town and what they are. So I think that that makes it even that much more important. I do have a background in interior design as well, and I've worked in space planning and commercial real estate, so depending on how the property develops, it might be of some help in that regard as well.
Thank you. Questions for the board?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward DeSalvo.
Not present.
Nope. Gabrielle Dorsey, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Gabrielle. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-three. My family moved here from out of state, but we have roots that go back to the forties and fifties as summer residents, and mine it. I graduated from Situate Public Schools, and then I went on to marry a Situate, into a Situate family, who's also been here since probably the thirties, with a similar path of summering and then becoming permanent residents here.
I understand, since the thirties, that's a relative newcomer to some of the people in this room.
Yeah, I know. Um, my, so now I'm a proud resident of the Sand Hills area, Seabou Ave, where my husband and I live, and we just had a baby, and we'll be growing our family here in Situate as well. So I feel that.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I feel that I'm representative of both the past and the future of Situate. I feel I care very deeply about this town. I'm very proud of this town, and have loved to welcome friends and family from out of state and bring them here, and it's just that everyone loves Situate, and I'd love to see how we can make Situate an even better place and ensure its growth and prosperity moving forward. So from a passion standpoint, I feel that I bring that to this committee and this opportunity. Professionally, I'm a marketing communications professional. I've been working since I graduated in college in that field. I have experience in public relations, advertising, and also nonprofit management. So my skills that I bring, I work well within committees, cross-functional teams, presentations, analysis. I'm used to, you know, going deep dive into topics that maybe not something that I knew of right away, but had to learn quickly. So I look forward to the opportunity to bring those skills, those communication skills, presentation skills, et cetera, to this team. I do have a question, though.
Go ahead.
I wasn't sure what the time commitment is, how many meetings, and if that has been outlined.
It hasn't been outlined. I'm glad you brought it up. It's, I'm very glad you brought it up.
Thank you.
It's, it's probably difficult to take, be, give you an exact time commitment. I would, and the board could jump in and add a, correct me. I would say this committee would meet.
Once a month. And it might, and it might be every couple of weeks, and then it could, you know, have a larger space between some meetings.
Sure.
Let's say, over the next five months, they may meet eight times.
Okay.
That's absolutely off the top of my head, and could be more, go ahead.
But having said that, there's probably going to be a lot of work between the meetings.
That's what I figured.
That's the key thing, is doing the homework, doing the research, finding out what other communities have done, finding other building plans to get a general scope of what's going on, and that sort of stuff. It's probably going to be a fair, a fair bit of work, particularly in the middle to latter parts of it. But it does have a definite end.
That being five months.
Some of the other committees are, you know, in perpetuity.
Okay.
And you have a term of three years or five years or something, but this is finite. But it's, it's got, the meetings, as I think, as both Joe and Sean said, is going to be on the order of, you know, a couple a month, I think you can count on that. And either as full meetings, or you going to talk to someone else in town about something.
Sure.
But there'll be some work in between the meetings as well.
All right, well, thank you. I work in Boston, I can make the meetings, and I just, you know, with a newborn son, I just have to take that into consideration, but it all seems very reasonable, so.
Yeah, great.
Any questions for me? I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I can't stick around, because I do have to pick up my newborn son.
Well, you have.
You have my email address, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Well, do you have any questions to us of the, of the charter of the committee or anything? Have you read the charter of the committee?
No, I did. I read through that, and I understand what we're looking to do is really doing a lot of the investigation and looking into it, and coming forth with recommendations, so I think that's, I understand that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Edwards. Thomas Edwards. Lou Eisner. Tim Fitzgerald. I don't see Tim Fitzgerald here either. Conley Ford, I saw.
Conley's here. Conley, he was just here.
Saw him a moment ago.
Okay, well, maybe we can get him when he comes back.
Ella Francis, I, Ella, yes, I just, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good, thank you.
My name is Ella Francis, and I've been a citizen of Situate for sixty-five years. Maryland native.
Yep.
And I'm a member, I was a member of the Situate Waterfront Club, which membership I inherited from my husband, who was one of the original instigators of the Situate Waterfront Club, nineteen sixty-three, I think. Purpose for which they bought the club was to keep the space open so that people could enjoy the harbor. It was Gillies Boat Yacht, if you remember. And so we finally did sell that last year, the club, to a man who was considered, considerably interested in keeping it open as an arena, so it will remain open space for the people of town. I'm concerned that the space, open space for the people to see and enjoy the harbor is becoming very limited, and I think we should protect what we do have now. And you know, and I know, that there's been building all around it. I, I think the people of the town need to be able to enjoy it, whether they have a boat or whether they go to the beach or whatever. And so mainly my concern is to try to make it useful to the people of the town some way or another, but keep that area open for their enjoyment.
And I think part of the reason, a good part of the reason that we bought, you know, the boat yacht across the harbor, and there was so much interest, and this was exactly for what you're saying, that we, we also realize that there's not a lot of open space on, on the ocean.
Yeah, right.
And any chance we had to, to.
That's true.
Pick up some of it, we did, so.
Right.
Questions for the board?
Nope.
John?
Nope.
Ella, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anthony Fusco. How are you?
Quite well, how are you?
Again, we have your resume and, if you could just, impressive as it was, if you could just add to any.
Thumbnail sketch, I've been here for forty-three years, raised two boys in Situate, they've graduated the schools. Situate's given a lot to my family, they provided me with a lot of beauty and everything else, and when I take a look at Pier Forty-four, I really want to see that optimized, I want to see that actually, in a sense, glorified, you know, to be dressed up and to be a showcase for the town. My professional background allows me to participate in a lot of meetings, and I've been on state committees and state meetings and everything else, so that's not a, that's not a concern as far as, you know, I can see. What I am interested in is being able to bring together the demographics of the town, the age groups. In other words, not representing one age group. I'd love to see young people, I'd love to see, you know, young married people, I'd love to see young families, I'd love to see elderly, I'd love to see, you know, those type of people really enjoying what Pier Forty-four property is and what it could be. How it's going to be, I don't know. I'm retired. I'm going to be available, I can sit down, I can talk to people, I can talk to people of all ages, and get their ideas, and see what the townsfolk really would like to see happen down there. And that's what I would really look to do, you know, on the committee.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I guess not?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Peter Gately.
He's not able to be here.
Christopher George. How are you?
Doing great, thanks.
Good. Thanks for coming in.
Sure. Thanks for having me.
Again, just if you could just give us a little summary of who you are, and.
Sure.
Why you're interested.
I'm sorry, can you give us your name again? I just was looking down for a second.
Not a problem. Chris George.
Great, thank you.
I actually live at eighteen Damon Road here in Sand Hills. I have three young children. I've been in Situate now for ten years, commute into the city, and drive by the site daily. My boat is slipped at Situate Harbor Marina, so I actually look at it roughly daily, and I think that it's a huge opportunity for the town, for the, for all the members of the town, for the children, for the seniors, for the mass populace. One of the things I think that I bring as a recruiter is the ability to see from multiple perspectives and build consensus while driving people to action. You mentioned that it is, in fact, a finite project, and there's a need to actually come to conclusion. So often in these kinds of scenarios, people get paralyzed by perpetual analysis, and one of the things that I've been able to do in my career is help people sort of compromise and develop a solution that is actionable and meets the goals within the deadlines and timeframes of the project.
Thank you. Questions for the board?
I have one. What did you say your field of research is?
I'm a recruiter.
Recruiter?
Yes.
Okay, for who?
Fidelity Investments.
Recruit good people for them, will you?
In my imagination, there's a lot of people from Sand Hills apply. Everyone's chance to keep from Sand Hills, which is a good thing. Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy Gilmore.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have to say, I'm a resident of Situate for over twenty-five years, so I'm still not considered a local. I'm from the west end of Situate, up on First Parish Road, so I'm not considered part of Sand Hills. I can tell you, in the last handful of years, I've grown to appreciate this town for what it offers, its citizenry and the potential it has. My own personal attributes, I have been in construction contracting for over thirty years. I've seen a lot of commercial buildings, some that have been done properly for for their purpose and many that have not been. Personally, I'm a good listener. I think we do need to have input from the entire community, from all areas of the town, and that needs to be brought in and then compared with what other, what other buildings of similar use are like this in the New England area, so we could actually have some actual real data from certain buildings that are already out there. Do I know of any now? Absolutely not. I came here with an open mind, and I'd like to reserve that right. The other thing that I think is important, the Maritime Center, I had, came into that a little late, but did have some involvement, and the energy and the use that potentially can happen over there is quite exceptional. And I think this would be a great compliment. I thank you all for moving forward to procure the land. And you would find my time to be as open as it needs to be. I run my own business, and so I can be here whenever I need to be.
Questions?
Nope.
Sorry?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Stan Humphries is not here. Heather Marshall? Also not here. I think that covers all of the applicants for tonight. If anyone has any questions at all, feel free to ask. If you have any follow-up questions that you might think of tomorrow, Kim would be more than happy to attempt to answer them for you. Rick?
Yeah, I just had one question that I asked Gabrielle Dorsey before she left. Oh, you didn't leave. You've got to get your kids. You just leave out a big pile of food? We do have a charter, a very detailed charter for this committee, and have everybody read it? And if so, do they have any questions about it? Has everybody read it?
I have a question, which is to do with the charter, but it's also to do with the work of the committee, and that is access to offices of the town council, who presumably have knowledge as well as expertise, particularly in terms of zoning and so forth.
Yes, we'd be definitely having access through town council to make, at the appropriate level, at the appropriate times, to make sure of things. We have the whole resources of Town Hall and the considerable breadth of power of the town at our disposal for this.
And do you have a council who is the focal point?
Yes, that would be going through the chair of the committee and then through the chair of the Board of Selectmen and/or the town administrator. We wouldn't be having it, so regular commissioners would just be blasting emails to our town council, because that would be an inefficient use of resources, which, as I look at Mr. Paley, want to make sure we can serve our dollar values every minute we can. So everybody here has read the, everybody who came and talked tonight has read the charter? Is that correct? Okay, great. Thanks. Rocky?
This is probably the freest harbor from Maine to Florida, and we should not, and we will not destroy the aesthetics of this harbor. We're not going to have any more harbors like this for the rest of the, for the rest of the century. We should just leave it the way it's beautiful. It's probably the best in the whole East Coast. I travel from Maine to Florida, and it's probably the best experience. That image should just let it stay pretty and aesthetic. Have the boats there and the fishermen in the loft, and leave it in Situate was 20 years ago.
Sure. So I could just follow one more thing. Just as a reminder, and I don't want to end on a downer, but, you know, some of you are not going to get selected, most likely, because we have a long list of very qualified people. I do want to just remind you that any meetings that they have are going to be open to the public and will be announced, and we welcome everybody's participation, whether you're a committee member or not. And that really will just begin the process, and we genuinely mean that. We want people to be involved. I, for one, would feel like the committee, while most likely successful, consisting of those eight individuals, but I would very much like to have 20 people, 25 people in the room at all times, committee members and citizens alike. So if it doesn't work out this time around, please do pay attention and participate in this entire process from beginning to end.
Can I just jump one quick thing?
Absolutely.
For a reason, if going along, someone has to, you know, bow out and they can no longer make that commitment, someone's already up to speed and they can just jump right in.
No further comments. I thank you again for coming in, and the process is going to be, we have some more individuals to have in. I think it's next week, Kim?
The 21st.
The 21st. And we'd love to wrap this up shortly thereafter, so say before the end of the month would be our plan. Whether it works out that way or not, that certainly is our plan now. Okay? Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone for Judy's, we're a little ahead of the schedule, so we might have to jump around a little bit here, which we'll try to do. I don't see anyone from Judy's Walk for Hope yet. Maybe we could do number six with the board permission, the drain layers license. See if we get that.
Are they here, Joe?
Huh?
Are they here?
I don't believe they're here.
Right.
Oh, did you ask to, yeah, okay.
Oh, all right, so it might be early for them.
Maybe a little early. Why don't we?
Look, we just finished the, just finished the interviews of the candidates.
Why don't we?
Jump around if we're early.
Mrs. Sawyer, I don't see Jeff Rosen here or anybody else, so we'll have to move on that.
Mr. Norton?
Yes?
Mr. Krutzberg, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Eckhaus are here.
Everyone's here.
I think they're, I think they're all here. I don't know if all are here. I just saw them lurking around the back. Is everybody here? You're waiting for one? Okay, no problem. Number 10?
Special town meeting date, we could do that, 10. Tricia, any input on that?
I have nothing other to add than what we discussed last week, setting the date to November 8th and opening and closing the warrant, the dates indicated in your packet.
Hey, let's take a look at the packet. That is a...
More than a motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony, if you would. Thank you.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to set the date for special town meeting at, as Monday, November 8th, 2010.
Second.
Another motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
My bad.
Opposed?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye, in favor.
No motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to open the November 8th, 2010, special town meeting at 7:03 and close said warrant at the adjournment of the September 21st Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second, as well.
Motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Not quite ready for the...
You ready? They're indicating ready.
They're ready. Gentlemen. Number nine on our agenda.
Thanks for your understanding, guys.
Gentlemen, this has been a work in progress, and hopefully it's coming to a conclusion this evening. The agreement has been worked out between the committee and the town administrator, I think to everyone's satisfaction, would that be safe to say? Would, someone like to just give us a brief synopsis of the main points?
Sure. Thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight. We really appreciate it. As you know, we've been working as part of the Waterways Commission for quite some time to bring to fruition the Situate Maritime Center. And with the completion, initial completion of the building, we formed a separate group, the Situate Maritime Center Foundation, of which I'm the president. Dick Eckhaus here is the clerk and treasurer, and John Murphy is one of the directors. And the intent of the foundation is to be able to run the function room within the Maritime Center, making sure that it's scheduled properly, making it a real value added to the community for everyone that wants to use it, whether it be for marine education or some sailing programs or birthday parties, so that everyone in town gets the benefit of being able to have access to the waterways. Furthermore, our intention is to use monies that we raise for the use of the function room to improve the building, put back into the building in the form of maintenance items, improvements, or even at some point, we're talking about potentially scholarships for folks who can't otherwise be able to use the waterways. So that's the net-net of it. It's really one of concerned people who are very interested in maintaining the building and making sure that it continues to be an asset to the community with no additional cost.
How, how's it going so far?
It's going terrific. We've had quite a season so far, even though it's our first year, between recreational sailing, people from Chorus who used it for a week, for children who otherwise could not be able to get to the waterfront and utilize it. They were able to have an advantage there. We've used it for marine training, and we've used it for such things as birthday parties. So we feel that we're getting a good overall flavor. We're maintaining a very specific schedule, and I think people are enjoying it.
When this was, when the seed was planted to look at this property and to buy this property, how you were involved back then also, and that was, that was the purpose, I think. That's what everyone had in the back of their mind, exactly what you're describing here now, to keep the maritime flavor in Situate. We saw it slowly slipping away with development, et cetera, so it sounds like it's certainly going in the right direction as far as my thoughts were. Any comments? Rick?
Yeah, as you might imagine, I might have a comment on this subject. Yeah, you folks are just being a bit modest here, and I just wanted to draw a little attention to people in the audience about all the work that's gone in to get this agreement up. You all founded the nonprofit, but there's also been a lot of meetings. Back when Mr. Norton was chair and I was vice chair, we had meetings across the hall with Tricia and Mark Patterson, the harbor master, and other interested parties, Mr. Danny He and us and Tricia and yourselves. We all had another meeting, very productive. Akili Storms was there, other members of the nonprofit. And, and for those of you watching and listening, it just might seem this is a, it's just a little license agreement, but it's, Tricia's put a lot of work into this. You guys have put a lot of work into this. And it's really a wonderful thing to get this going. And when, Joe, you asked, how's it going so far? I will say that when they said it's going well, that's true, but, you know, we just heard one of the applicants for the Pier 44 committee mention it by name. I've had tons of people down on the docks mention this, and Chuck Tuohy here is another member who's been very active involved. He just joined us here, and this is really good stuff. And, you know, DPW had a lot of work to do with this, with so on and so forth, but I just want to point out that the, the building itself was built by the... South Shore, Votech, thank you, brain spasm there. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment were donated, windows were donated, roofing material was donated, timing was donated by vendors and individuals in the town. And it's really a wonderful thing, and it's a credit. And this is going to help us maintain it, operate it, and keep it moving forward in the condition and the shape that it is. It would be one thing just to build it and walk away, and that's not what we want to do. We want to build it, maintain it, and have it moving forward. And that's what this agreement between the town and your foundation does, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Maybe one of you would like to comment on the fact of how people get in touch with you if they want to use it. It's a beautiful site. It's a beautiful building. You mentioned people can use it for private use at a nominal fee, and that it's also space available for town meetings, which sometimes gets very tight, tight in the community as well. So is there, is it on our website or is it?
It's a separate website. It's situatemaritimecenter.com. It explains the policies. It explains when you want to have food, who the caterers are, and it also has access to the calendar, so you know whether or not that date is available at that time on that day.
And the revenue from these things will help keep, like Rick was just saying, maintain the property and keep it in the quality that it is now. So that's really what the lease is for, is, you know, some sort of back and forth to have the building stay in the shape that it is now.
It's worked very well cooperatively with the harbor master, because that office maintains a good part of the building, and when we can, we work together to make sure that everything is stayed in care of.
Great.
Just one quick question. It still remains a public building for people down at the marina, used for bathrooms and so forth.
Absolutely. And not only that, but the decking is always available, and you'll see people up there painting, people up there just sitting and watching the sunset. So it's used quite a bit, whether or not they want to use the meeting portion of it.
Tricia, any comment? I'm sorry, Rick, do you have a comment?
No, I'm all set.
No, I just want to thank the gentlemen here for their patience and perseverance, and I'm really happy we're signing this tonight.
Thank you.
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Love one.
Okay. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to support the license agreement for the Situate Maritime Center as presented by the town administrator through March 1st, 2012.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you all, and thank you for all the work that went into it. Thank you. Continuing to skip around a bit, number 13 is a resignation that we could accept.
Do that?
Yeah, number 13.
Says, "Dear Situate Selectmen, I regret to inform you that I will no longer be able to be a part member of the Situate Cultural Council. I have taken an even position, which prevents me from being able to participate in the council. Thank you for the opportunity. Sincerely, Doreen Lang." And I know as the board, we want to thank her for her support and all her effort in this council, and wish her the best, and come back and help us with something else in the future.
Motion to accept the resignation?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Doreen Lang from the Situate Cultural Council.
Second? Motion was made and seconded. Discussion? Having none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are running out of things to do, only because the interviews went along smoother than we anticipated, and a few people weren't able to make it. Tricia, we could take a break now until more people came in, or we could move to executive session if you thought that that would be done in 10 or 15 minutes.
That's fine with me.
With the board's pleasure.
Would Mr. Danny He be joining us later this evening?
Pardon?
Will John be joining us later this evening?
Depends what time, you know, I don't know.
I'd like to give Mr. Danny He as much chance as possible to join us for executive session, if I may. Is there, is anybody here from five yet, from the Judy's Walk for Hope?
No.
Okay.
Do we need them here?
Do we need them here?
We do not need them here.
Let's do that.
I don't think we do, unless the board feels differently. The date, this is an annual request and...
There have been no problems with this walk before, have there?
None whatsoever.
Tricia, do you have any, any record of any difficulty with this walk in the past?
For item number five?
Correct.
No.
Okay. Kim, if I may, has there been any problems or any issues brought up with this particular event?
No, I was just going to ask if your office received a special events. I don't recall, since it was the one-day beer and wine that's on the, here, not the event itself.
Yeah, we're not giving permission for the walk. We're just giving permission for the, for the one day.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can approve the one-day beer and license and then do the special event or later. When's the event?
October 2nd.
Yeah. Do it on the 21st.
As long as they know that they need to actually apply.
We can have it for the 21st.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license for a fundraiser. Judy's Walk for Hope to be held at St. Mary's Parish Center, 1 Kent Street on Saturday, October 2nd, 2010, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's unanimous. Economic Development Committee?
I saw Bill outside.
Bill, yeah, Bill's outside. Steve Laura's outside. If you would, thank you, Ann. I don't know who else is...
The other business, 14 other business.
Yeah, we could do that while we're waiting. We, yeah, we could do that while we're waiting. Is anything other business the board would like to mention?
Not gonna burn too much time on that one, is it?
No.
Well, I'll just mention one thing unless someone else has, wants to go first, just maybe mentioned it to John, I'm not sure, or he might have mentioned it too, but, um, Council on Aging has requested at their last meeting that we write a letter to our reps, State Senator, to get the ride, or, or try to get the ride into Situate. It's come as close as Cohasset. People have to go up to the, think it's the Shaws to, to pick it up. Florence, uh, discussed all the programs that they currently have, and they felt that that would be the best one they would like. In fact, she was gonna help us draft this up, so probably at our next meeting, I'll have a draft letter for everyone, just to have a quick look at it, and come up to speed myself on it, and you guys might have more information. The need just keeps, every month, they have how many rides, how many, how many requests there are, it's just, it's, it's growing. So they really, you know, the, the need is there, has nothing to do with how wealthy a town is versus another town.
Right.
You know, I know some years ago, we requested that they bring the ride to Situate, and it had to do with, you know, the MBTA, you know, not servicing this area, that we, you know, couldn't participate. All that's changed, we just want to look into it. The worst thing I think that can happen is the answer will be no, so...
If she could draft a letter, I'm sure we could put it on the agenda and discuss it.
That's what I was, just kind of want to bring everyone up to speed, that's all.
Great.
Unfortunately, I don't have any other business, Mr. Chair.
Tony?
Could probably talk about Little League for twenty minutes if you'd like.
Well...
But, um, just a, a couple of quick things, just a reminder that the election is next, next weekend. The polling hours are nine, nine to eight?
Nine to...
Primary?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Next week.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah.
A week from today.
I think...
Is it eight in the morning till...
Seven or eight.
Seven.
It's all day.
All day, seven, seven to eight.
All day.
So get out there and vote, and then just, uh, school started today, and I think, uh, my kids had, got off to a good start, so I hope everyone else did too.
Thank you. Uh, other business, more or less taken care of?
Correspondence? Nope, no correspondence.
Jeff, how are you doing, as far as, are you prepared?
I would be ready, you and...
Oh, Joe.
Three minutes.
Twelve? Sister City?
Uh, she's not here, Pat's not here yet.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Judy's Walk just came in?
Yeah, Judy, why don't you, Judy's, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, we've, we've kind of beaten you to the punch, how you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Good. We voted, uh, in your absence, we voted the beer and wine license.
Oh, thank you.
So that's done. There was one question on the...
Special permit application.
Special permit application for the actual race.
Special events.
How does that work, Kim?
Uh, we have a permit, a special events permit that we're asking all of these type of functions to fill out now. Um, I can actually step out and give you the proper...
Okay. It's, it's not gonna be a race, it's just they usually walk on the sidewalk.
Yep. Understood.
Yep.
Yep. We just have so, so many of these very worthwhile events now in town, we need to coordinate them, and so we've instituted in the last year or so, a, uh, application process to make sure that everything's been signed off on by the various, uh, town offices and so on, so it's, um...
Are you involved with that?
Uh, Tricia, can you answer that?
Um, it depends on the organization, but it's on the form, you can read it.
Tony, Tony just mentioned Little League, and I just thought I'd jump in and say that Judy was one of the founders, I guess, of Little League. She coached, uh, a long time ago.
Not very popular at first because her motto was she wanted everyone to play.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
What the women know about baseball, but I think it was the third year she won the league championship, and then...
That's showing them, yeah.
Yeah, she did a...
She's been on board of directors for ten years.
She was, she did a great job. Great job.
That's excellent. Well, yeah, Ms. Donovan will be here, and we'll give you the, uh, the form in just a second. She just stepped across the hall to get it for you, or she already did back there.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, Jeff, I don't like to rush you by any means, I hate to do that to you, but we...
I, I'm just...
Joe, one quick thing, do they have to come back next meeting to get the event approved? Or can they just...
I'm sure it'll be fine. Yeah, I can approve it, yeah, yeah.
So we don't have to vote on it? Okay.
Okay.
What's the best thing for the camera, John?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, there we go, there we go. I'm just... Keep me next job.
That Rick Murray sailboat, I see.
That's not big enough to be his.
That's, uh, that's Wednesday night, the PHRF racing of Situate Harbor.
Now, we know it's him.
Uh, gender item number eight, Jeff, thank you, Jeff, for coming in, you've been so important to this whole project, and, and we thank you for that. And it's going to be a presentation, I guess, on the Massasoit College?
Yes, um, as soon as I can get it, I'll sit up here, take a little second just to hear it start up. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. Tricia, I'd like to thank you for, um, for prompting this, uh, this evening. Uh, it's, it is almost two years, as I understand it, since we were here last, and we said to you that, uh, in, in two years, we were gonna come back and we were gonna have a plan, and we, we will have made quite a bit of progress, and I'm here tonight to fill you in on the progress made. Uh, Mr. Norton, I want to thank you personally for the, uh, for the stimulus that you gave us earlier in the summer, because your advice turned out to be right on the money. Uh, we followed through and did pursue some of the governmental and some of the political channels that, that you, you had recommended to us that we needed to pursue, and, and we did that, uh, quite successfully, as you'll see in a moment. Um, so the, the, and by the way, before I go on, I'd like to introduce some of the folks that are here with, uh, with the Marine and Environmental Education Alliance, Howie Kootsburg in the back, Jack Conway, Tom and Davis Nash are all very much involved in this effort. Um, as a matter of fact, Tom was the first one to see the possibilities of this, and, uh, since, since we originally talked, uh, we, we came before the, the selectmen, and you showed us quite a bit of support for this, uh, for this project, and I'm here tonight to tell you where we're at and to ask you to facilitate the next steps that we need to make.
Just walked in.
Oh, there we go. And, uh, this is Donald Walter, who many of you know. Donald's also on our board, and I've asked Donald to join us, because Donald, uh, the designs that you're gonna see this evening for the building were done by Don, Donald's firm pro bono for us, and Donald will tell you a little bit about that. Um, so I don't want to keep it very long, I'll try and be very brief. I have a lot of slides, I'm not gonna go through them all, we're gonna pretty much run through them. Uh, my goal tonight is, again, to bring you up to speed. If you have any questions, please stop me along the way, ask whatever questions you have. Uh, and with that, I'll get started. Uh, we, we have renamed our effort to the Ocean Campus Center for Marine and Environmental Studies. The, uh, the board is still MEA, the Marine and Environmental Education Alliance. Our 501(c)(3) application is in with the IRS, uh, and it is being processed. We've heard back from them as recently as about two weeks ago, they're processing, they keep asking us additional questions. Uh, we don't anticipate there being any problems with us getting the 501(c)(3) designation, which for those of you who don't know, that would give us, uh, not-for-profit status on a, a federal level, so that we could take donations and, and contributions towards the effort. For those who are not familiar with this effort, uh, the, the concept here is that we are proposing to build a school, an educational facility in Situate, that would bridge a very important gap in the educational, um, spectrum right now, specifically aimed at people who would be involved in the marine trades, including both recreational and commercial. Uh, these people would be trained to fix boats, to fix engines, to install electronics, et cetera, uh, but also would focus on environmental technologies, those including monitoring. Uh, we'd be training people for work and jobs for the, uh, for water treatment plants and for wastewater treatment plants, where right now, there is a tremendous gap in the number of people that are necessary. These positions, by the way, would pay very well. Uh, I don't have it with me, but I can show you an article that was published in The Globe July 14th that identified just exactly this kind of a need. Um, these are the people who are currently on our board, I've introduced quite a few of them to you already. Uh, as you know, many of these people are very much involved in the town through a wide variety of different programs and volunteer efforts. Um, the, the stakeholders that we have been in discussions with about this include the town, Massasoit Community College is very much involved, the Situate Public Schools, the Massachusetts Marine Trade Association Educational Trust, which sees the same gap that we have identified, and they're very eager to get, to help us fill that. Um, the Urban Har, Stillwagon Bank National Marine Sanctuary here in Situate.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And I've also had communications with the National Marine Sanctuary program on a national level, and they're all very interested in this. Uh, Urban Harbor Institute, UMass, is involved now, they did a feasibility study for jobs in marine trades back in 2004, and right now, we are seeking funds to get that updated to 2010. That study basically would say to us, if we build it, will we have students, will they come here when they get out of school, will there be jobs for them? What is the probability that if we built such a campus, that it would bring new industries into the South Shore and specifically into Situate? Um, Situate Historical Society has also been supporting us, and now, very recently, just in the last few weeks, we met with Peter Foreman of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, and Peter was originally a little bit of a skeptic, uh, we've turned him, uh, he is now a very, very strong advocate for this program, and he is helping us build some of those bridges, Joe, that, that you suggested to us that we needed to have in place. The governmental support right now, as we said, the town, Congressman William Delahunt, State Senator Rob Beheadland, Jim Cantwell has been a soldier for us, he's basically been out drumming up support, setting up meetings for us, and he's very, very supportive of this. Uh, we recently met with, uh, Mr. Greg Bielecki, the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development up on Beacon Hill, and he was very, very enthusiastic, seeing this fitting into the governor's program to develop, uh, centers of excellence, and he sees this as being a great program for the South Shore. Uh, business support, Doran Whittier Architects, that's where Donald works, 3A Marine, Orenberger Associates, uh, Mr. Orenberger's been helping us with legal advice, Ross Engineering and Ty &amp; Bond have both been helping out with, uh, with engineering support. We've got a survey done of the property already, we know about the limitations of the, of formal landfill being behind the property, what we would need to do to make the building work. And then, uh, Mr. Joseph Costello has been acting as our CPA, and has helped us get the 501(c)(3) submitted.
Just, Jeff, you asked us to jump in with questions, and not so much for ourselves, but for the audience, both TV and here. Where is this building you're talking about? Where's your location?
Um, right now, we're, we're proposing, I'm not sure if the slide stayed in or not, but, uh, we're proposing this on the Driftway, and it would be situated on a piece of property that would be between the entrance to the, uh, the current transfer station and the golf course parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the question is, why are we proposing this? Well, the answer is that there, there is a need for qualified marine environmental technical specialists, we're talking about people who are technicians, we're talking about good-paying jobs, these would be jobs that, that could be there for people coming out of high school after two years of working in this program. It, it also could be jobs for people who have lost their positions in other industries that could be retrained for these positions, and these are well-paying jobs with career futures to them, so it'd be, be a, be a, a great way to make a living and also to have a career. Um, we see this campus being a multi, a multipurpose center. It would not only be for the Massasoit classes, it would be for, uh, for students from these local area high schools. As a matter of fact, uh, last week, we met with the folks from the Vocational Tech School who would help build the Maritime Center, and, uh, the gentleman who came from there was very, very enthusiastic about this. He said that they used to have a program like this, it hasn't been in place for about fourteen, fifteen years, and he does see a need for it, and this could be a, a great partnership for them as well. So, uh, we're, we see the building as being not just for the one purpose, but for being, for many purposes. As a matter of fact, we also see the meeting spaces, uh, Tricia asked me to, um, to try to view this from the town perspective. We see this very much as a building that would be used by the entire town, it would have amazing meeting spaces. Uh, we'll show you some of those. Uh, it's gonna be a green building, it's gonna have a green roof that overlooks, uh, Fourth Cliff and the North and South Rivers and, and the Herring River, and, uh, we see all of that as being, uh, facilities that would be available to townspeople for meeting and for activities and events. So the, uh, the place that I had mentioned that, that we see this filling in, oh, thank you, I have one, um, but the place we see this filling in is for, um, it, it's not a K through twelve, and it's not a, for the bachelor's, masters, PhD, and postdoctoral programs, but rather, its, its focus would be on certificate programs and associate's degrees. So people, again, who are coming in looking for retraining for technical jobs, these would be very technical jobs, uh, this would be the focus of it. And as we said, there would be a, a component of this for the K through twelve, perhaps for honest students, et cetera. Oh, and this is Ed Lofgren, just joined us, Ed is the owner of 3A Marine, is also on the board and very, very much involved in the effort. Thank you, Rick. Um, so the, the industries that would be served by this are the environmental sciences, as I said, water treatment and monitoring, alternative energies. We see this school, the technical requirements, as we move into alternative energies, is gonna be formidable, uh, we're gonna need people who can maintain windmills and, uh, solar arrays and tidal and wind generation and, um, wave generation as well. Homeland Security, the people protecting the ports now are gonna need the same kind of communication skills. Electronics, computers, communications, being able to communicate back and forth with ships, with what's on the ships, when were they packed, who were they last accessed by. Um, so there is a very important play here for Homeland Security as we look at protecting ports. Be a role in this school for fisheries, for marine engines, for boat building and repair, and for marine electronics. Uh, Ed Lofgren, who just walked in, I had mentioned to you earlier, the Mass Marine Trades Association, i- is very interested in this. Ed owns 3A Marine, he can tell you the, the tremendous vacuum that they have right now for these technical skills that are necessary to support both the recreational as well as the commercial boating industries. So, um, uh, Mr. Norton, you asked a question about where this is, well, here's a, a figure that shows it, and we, this figure, by the way, was very interesting to Mr. Bielecki when we showed it to him, because the, the question that comes up is, why Situate? Why are we proposing to put it here? And the answer is that we have a, a site, this yellow box right here, this is the Driftway right here, coming into the harbor. Um, here is Route 3A, uh, and Route 123 is, uh, right there. Is that right? Uh, yeah, right there. Um, surrounding this site, we have the commuter rail for, for transportation, we have a water treatment plant, we have the future wind turbine, we have the wastewater treatment plant, we have the, uh, the golf course, we have the former capped landfill, uh, we have the harbor, we have the rivers, we have the ocean, we have the Maritime Center, and we have Stillwagon Bank, all within about a three-mile radius. radius. This is a perfect place to put this kind of a school. The resources of the town would be very, very well-used and very well-exercised in teaching of courses within this facility. So when we showed this to Mr. Bielecki, and also, by the way, this was one of the slides that really convinced Mr. Foreman of the Chamber of Commerce that this is the right spot. There's probably not another site like this in, on the South Shore that could support it with this variety of resources around it. So the kinds of programs, by the way, we were asked another question, which is very relevant. Why this mixture of things that we're talking about? Well, the answer is that they are supported by common technologies. They all have electronics involved with them. They all have communications involved with them. They have a lot of data involved with them. They need computer skills. You can't fix engines these days if you can't plug it into a computer. The new electronics, all the communications, all of these things are common themes through all of these programs that we're talking about. So I've mentioned most of these to you before. Some of the other things that we are seeing this center supporting is distance learning. As Donald's going to show you in a few minutes, there's a, there's a distance learning center, a large auditorium that, again, would be useful for the, for the town, that would have all of the modern communications, so that you'd be able to see things over the Internet. We'd be able to do web seminars and long-distance outreach. So whatever it is that develops here will be transportable elsewhere, and when we find technologies elsewhere that we'd like to bring to Situate, we can do it through the magic of the Internet. We also see conferences and events, bringing people into town for technical conferences. We see career placement occurring here, because, again, we're going to train these people for jobs. These are going to be for the modern, emerging jobs of the twenty-first century. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Donald. Donald, I took some slides out for expedience, but take it away.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening. You've heard, you've heard why. You've got a sense of where a little bit and what the program might be. What I'm going to do is just take you through some of the ideas and some of the images that we see that could potentially happen within this building, and I'll walk you through the site and the building itself, give you an idea of what we think it may look like. So here's some of the lab spaces that you might see within the building, some of the fiberglassing, boat building, environmental laboratories, wood shops, things of that Technology spaces. This building will be technology-rich, as you can imagine, given the programs that are going to be located in here. Focus on this particular space here, which is what we envisioned a distance-learning lab to be like. Think of your traditional tiered lecture-type hall in a high school or university, and go beyond the walls within that space. This type of space can be set up to communicate anywhere in the world, so not just Situate or Massachusetts or the United States, but anywhere in the world, so you can share information that's being developed and learned within the facility and grab information from any place else out there beyond our walls. Some of the other spaces, some teaching and gathering spaces, and I think what's important about this slide is there's a variety of scale, but in every case, there's a lot of natural light. It's been determined that natural light is just such a great benefit to learning environments and actually enhances teaching and learning. So that's going to be a huge part of this particular center also. To take you onto the site, Jeff mentioned with the larger graphic where we're going to be located. Here's the Driftway coming along here. Entrance to the transfer station is right here. If you're heading downtown, this would be the Widow's Walk Golf Course and the clubhouse. Immediately across the street is Herring Brook, and of course, the boat launch being located there and taking you out beyond to the North River, the Spit, and Fourth Cliff. What's interesting about this, this particular site, this is the wooded area that's between Widow's Walk and the, and the transfer station. Anyone familiar with that piece of property also knows that it's, it's got quite a slope to it. From the Driftway up to the top edge of the former landfill, which is capped, there's about a twenty-five-foot grade differential. We actually saw that as a real benefit and opportunity for this particular building. As you can see by this graphic here, the building is primarily facing south, so we have an opportunity here to not only capture the views that we have out onto Herring Brook and beyond, but also to capture the sun and the winds that blow off the ocean. So the way the building is set up, it's a two-story structure, and it's actually set up to basically be the bridge between a lower level and an upper level, that twenty-five-foot grade difference. So the entrance to the, to the site right now is off of the Driftway down here with parking at a lower entrance. If you come up around here, parking at an upper entrance. And I'll show you in the plan a minute how that works, but essentially, there's a more public entrance and a more private entrance for students and for some of the marine engine work that might be going on.
By the way, before we go away from this slide, we also see an opportunity here that as the golf course needs additional space, if they were to have a large event and they needed a really pretty meeting space, you saw that big, beautiful, open space that Donald showed on a previous picture. We see the opportunity, because it's going to be so close and almost connected, that people could walk over from the clubhouse to a more formal type of meeting area, you know, for banquet or something like that.
Right. And with that also, a connection between the two parking lots, so it could be off-hours opportunities for either, either facility, for overflow parking. So in terms of the floor plan and the way the building works, we'll start on the upper level, that which is up closest to the boundary of the landfill. If you recall, that drive, they come up above where there's some parking, takes you to an upper-level entrance. Then the way the building is set up, there's a main lobby upon entering the building, and there's a stair that will take you down also to that lower level. So this becomes a very large atrium or open space, which becomes the primary circulation between the upper and lower levels within the building. Since it is the most public entrance, you also have the school administration, registration, things of that nature, the meet-and-greet aspect of the building for people coming in. There's also the, what we're calling a student lounge and media area, but also is really a large gathering space that Jeff mentioned that could not only be utilized by the school, but could be utilized by the community, utilized by, perhaps by the golf course for some of the charity events that occur there, set up for perhaps a hundred to a hundred and fifty people within there, with a large viewing deck beyond. Anyone who's been outside beyond, anyone who's been up at the, the practice green at Widow's Walk and looks back out towards the Fourth Cliff will understand that that's exactly what this viewing deck in this particular location in the building will do.
How far, how far is that from sort of the putting green?
The putting green would be located right about here, about fifty feet away, so relatively close.
Don, is the brown outside?
The brown is outside space, yes. Yeah, the red would be inside space. So that takes you to a large public area on this side. If you came in the front door and went to the right, here's that distance-learning lab that we have set up, which is really a lecture hall also. Fifty to seventy-five people seated in there with tables in front of them with the ability to plug in laptop computers, view multiple screens on the, at the front of the room, and have, have communication beyond, as well as school committee meetings, board of flex meetings. Anyone could utilize this space to its fullest extent. The building, as Jeff mentioned, is a marine and environmental center. So the way the, the building is set up from level to level is, the upper level is really the environmental aspect of it, with classroom biology and technology and small group learning space located at this end of the building. So we end up with the, the large lecture hall, the lab, the public space, and then the, the environmental aspect of the building. If you come to the, the lower level, that stair that we pointed out would drop you off into this lobby here, or if you entered from the lower parking lot level, you'd come in at this level. This is really the marine level of the building. Coming into that, that main lobby, there would be the electronics lab with support space and a conference room. Off of that, a marine engineering classroom, and then a four-bay marine engineering lab. This is set up to be really like large garage bay-type space, tall ceilings, lot of walk-around room within it. You can, as you can see by the graphic, you can back boats right into here for engine repair, fiberglass repair, canvassing. You can do electronics work within the boats that comes right out of the electronics lab. So there's, there are a lot of opportunities in, within this space, and of course, it's immediately adjacent to a classroom, so you could have students go in, have a lecture situation, and then immediately go out into the engines lab and do some practical application. We show you this drawing here. This is actually a building section, which is what we call a cross-section, cut through the, through the building. So you can see the lower-level entrance down below, which is approximately the Driftway level, the upper entrance, which is up close to the back of the landfill. We're showing between the two about a twenty-foot difference in the building floor height. So this is actually taken right through that stair. So if you entered at the upper level, you could then circulate down to the lower level or vice versa, or get into any of the other spaces on, on either level. And what, the other thing we're trying to show here is that, that the openness that's going to be within this building, a lot of glass, a lot of ability to see in and see what's going on, be in and look out to, be inspired by some of the views. And Jeff mentioned the, the green roof that's being envisioned, which essentially would be a planted roof that would work not only to reduce the heat island effect of a typical membrane roof, but also become the demonstration situation and part of the classroom within the, within the building. So it becomes a learning lab on the outside of the building also. And then the, the image that we're envisioning right now of the building, this is taken from the Driftway, the two-story building. You can see here the, the four marine engine lab, basically boat garages, the electronics lab. This would be where the multipurpose gathering space is with the viewing deck, and then the distance-learning in classrooms. All these drawings are conceptual, but we're, what we're trying to convey here is that the building would be very open. It would be something that we felt really fit into the setting of the woods. A lot of the trees would remain all around it, so that the building would be set right down upon there, and we really think it could become a benefit and part of the gateway to, to Situate. And then lastly, we just want to point out, Jeff said it's going to be a green building, which means we're really going to try and incorporate a lot of sustainable features within the building. But first and foremost, we want the building to be a teaching tool. So mentioned the, the green roof, that could be a demonstration roof, it could be part of a teaching tool. The building will also look at having high-performance boilers, photovoltaic arrays, perhaps small wind turbines, the opportunity to grab some of the methane gas from the landfill and utilize that within the building. So rainwater harvesting, so we can, we can gather some of the water within the, on the site or from the roof and actually reuse that for flushing toilets or irrigating land. So there are a lot of opportunities that can be explored here, and I think, you know, first and foremost, it wants to be energy-efficient, and it wants to be a healthy building, so that's what will come out of this also. Back to Jeff.
Questions?
Question. John, I thought.
Do we have the acreage? You're talking about thirty thousand square foot building, three-quarters of acres. There's enough acreage there to fit it in?
Yeah, it's, it's a one-point-six?
No, I think it's more than three-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, three-point-two.
Oh, is that much? Great. So before we get into the area, before we get into the area where DEP would have to probably put their stamp of approval on it, where we're getting up to the capped landfill?
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't actually be on the landfill. We're staying off of that completely. In fact, there's that swale that runs along the bottom.
We wouldn't have to worry about any methane gas leaking? Okay.
There would have to be a barrier wall.
Okay.
Actually, one thing that's nice about this design, the barrier wall could, could be at the back of the parking that's up there, so you actually end up with belts and suspenders from what's already on place at the landfill itself.
Okay.
And the other thing, if I just could, the, the footprint of the building is actually about fifteen thousand square feet. So while the building is thirty thousand, the footprint is only fifteen thousand itself.
Just to piggyback Sean's question, how far back does it go from the Driftway, so it doesn't get to the slope of the landfill?
It doesn't get up to the, to the, the top of the hill where the landfill begins. No, we stay out of that altogether.
When you walk along, when you come out, could you back up, please, Don, to the, or Jeff, to the?
Back to that.
To the?
One more.
Keep going.
Yep.
Another one. Another one.
Good there.
Please. Another one, please. Another one, please. There you go. When you're actually walking along this area, and you come up from here, and you walk up, and there's the road that comes along there, where there's a break-in slope between the landfill that goes up in this direction, and then there's a little sort of flattish area, and then it plunges down. There's actually a very clear demarcation between the landfill, and in some of these areas over here, I don't exactly recall where, you can actually see the cap of the landfill poking out, and this property that we're talking about here is well to the south of that. I mean, it's obviously there, but we're not harming, we're not touching at all the landfill composition or any of its closings or caps or anything of that. I mean, we do have a barrier wall in there, but it's, it's surprisingly distant from here to here, and there's also a lot more land than you think of here, because the other thing is when you're on Driftway, it goes down a little bit, and then it goes up, so your, your eye, when you're driving along, it doesn't really see this, this distance. It's a surprisingly big piece of land.
I guess my question is, because this piece of property is somewhat popular in town, and don't get me wrong, I love the idea, but there's solar paneling that Al's looking to put up in that area. Every sport entity in the town is looking for that area to put soccer fields, baseball fields, lacrosse fields. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you know, that there's still room for all the other projects that we're talking about in that area. And I even walked back there to see it.
Any, any, my understanding is, is this is, this will have absolutely zero effect on any potential use of the landfill.
Because we're not going up onto the landfill.
No, no, but anyone that was going to do anything up there would probably want some of this space to get there. But I don't, you said it's, what, three acres? Is that what you said?
Something like that. We actually have a survey done of it.
And actually, given the slope, you certainly wouldn't access it this way because of the slope that you'd have.
Probably get it from the other side.
You want to come from this end anyway.
Correct.
And really, the, the edge of this parking is inward from the edge of the tree line. So, and then the landfill is beyond the tree line also, so we're not impacting that at all.
Jeff, if I, if I could, I don't know if, I don't think you put this slide up, but one of the slides that you gave us, nineteen, is the next steps with the town, the next, where do we go from here, I guess? So that would be my question.
Okay.
Where do we go from here?
Next.
Okay.
Wait, can I just, I wasn't here for some of the initial stuff. Before you go there, just a couple of quick questions that will help me and maybe people watching. Who, who owns the building? Like, what's the town's stake in this? What's our expenditures? What's the ownership? Where's money coming from? All that sort of stuff? If you can just give a-
Let me answer as best I can. Some of that is not known at this point, but the one thing we do know is that we will not be asking the town for any money to build this building or to study it or anything else. We haven't, we haven't taken any money from the town thus far. The, the one cost to the town would be that the land would then be occupied, and it would be, you know, since we're going to be a not-for-profit, there's not, there's no extensive tax revenues that, that we're talking about here, although we do believe that this will bring industry into the town, which could increase the tax base.
So let me, so the entity, the nonprofit, is going to own it?
Well, that is, that is up for discussion at this point. The way we've envisioned it thus far is that the, the nonprofit, MEA, would be the actual owner of the building. We would be the ones, the money would come into, we would arrange for the financing, and we would be on the hook for paying whatever the monthly nut was on it. That is open for discussion, and mostly because, one of the things I haven't told you about is that the, the response to this has been so overwhelming, and I, I think for, for our board, we've been somewhat overwhelmed by it. You know, we went, we went up to Beacon Hill, and the response was so positive that we now have a lot of people interested in this. So how it will be managed, we, we don't have that secured yet. But I mean, that's one of the things you'll see here that we, we do need to get out, we need to get out a good, firm business plan about how this will be done. Our plan right now is to go out to the private sector and to ask the private sector if they would be willing to support this, because it's going to, it's going to help them. We will have a meeting soon with, with Clean Harbors, which has just had a windfall from the Gulf, and the people that we'd be training would be ramped directly in there. We're going to meet with people in the marine industries, including electronics, and Ed has got a lot of contacts in the, in the, in the recreational community. We believe that we're going to find a tremendous amount of interest in sponsoring, putting this building up.
So Jeff, could you, just as a specific example, tell Tony about the potential for the feasibility study, for example, being funded not by the town, but by other resources?
Yes. We, we recognize, one of the questions that everybody said is, well, it sounds like a great idea, but how do you know that if you build it, that you actually get any students who are in Situate? People got to come in from the road, they got to come down on the train, and then if you do, if you do have the people come, do we know that in fact, when they get done, they're going to have jobs? You probably read in, read in the Globe today that there's this concern about a lot of these schools getting people educations that they can't pay back. So one of the things that, we, we have a study from two thousand and four that was done by the Urban Harbors Institute at UMass Boston, and that's Jack Wigan, and, and we have asked Jack to give us a proposal to update that study and to place it, place such a school right here in Situate. And that money is potentially going to come from Secretary Bielecki, who's interested in funding that kind of a study. So we would have a feasibility study, then to go back to the industry and say, look, here's what the study says, here's all the data, the foundation about, if we put it up, yes, they will come, and yes, there will be jobs.
I, I think the idea is great. I love the job creation. I love the industry. You know, it seems to fit right here. My question is, so at this point in time, there's no financial expectation- My question is, so at this point in time, there's no financial expectations of the town, other than some sort of donation of the land, or some sort of lease of the land, or whatever that happens to work out? And obviously, the town will reap the benefits of the productivity of the land and just bringing people here into our retail space and all that sort of stuff.
Right. And an additional resource in town, again, for meeting, for education. Right now, Susan Martin is on our board as well. She's also very excited about this. There are great opportunities now for our, you know, juniors and seniors in high school to get a whole new program that would lead, again, to great jobs and also an avenue up to those higher degrees. So there's a lot of benefits in it. It does involve, it's going to involve some complexity that we're going to talk about in a moment, because we're going to have to figure out how to make this happen. How do we get a lease, put up a building? This is not a small building, it's a very large building, it's a very large undertaking. So there are still some hurdles that have to be, that we have to leap over. But as those of you who were here when we first came to talk to you about this, which is now over three years ago, we've made tremendous progress. And again, the head of steam that we, that we're experiencing is really rather remarkable, the amount of interest that is.
Thank you.
So to return to Mr. Norton's questions and getting towards some of the specifics, obviously, I've been involved in these discussions and so on, but what do we need to do now in terms of codifying the selectmen's intent to allow a lease eventually and all this sort of stuff? What do you need? Because I understand you've been talking with Bealecki, you've been talking with everybody else, and you do have a letter of support from us that we wrote down about a year and a half or so ago. But what else, if anything, do you formally need? Acknowledging that we're not going to sign off right now saying, yes, you have a lease such and such to the following terms and conditions, but that will all need to be worked out. It needs to go before town meeting because of disposition of public land as well. But what do you physically need right now?
Well, we need to move forward to firm up this commitment on the land, because again, we're not, no one's going to give us any money until we can demonstrate that we have this piece of property, which is so well situated here in Situate, that it's the right place for the school. I've spoken to Patricia about this, and what we're going to need to do is we're going to need to be ready to bring this to town meeting in the spring. And being ready to bring it to town meeting means that we will have the required planning, review, whatever permitting we need to do at that point. Because Patricia pointed out to me in our last discussion that we're going to need two things. Number one, we're going to need a commitment, we need direction from the town for the selectmen to negotiate this lease with MEA. And we're also going to need to probably get some kind of a exemption from 30-year minimum lease. No one is going to give us financing to put a building up for 30 years. They might give us financing to put a building up for 50 years or 99 years. So we're going to need to be ready, both us as well as the selectmen and the advisory committee and others, to go before a town meeting and say to the town, here's the opportunity, do you vote in favor of or not? And it seems to me that's a large leap for us to make by the spring.
On the other side, can you refresh for us the potential commitment from Massasoit and what the timeframe is on that? Just because I wouldn't want to, you know, you could build it, it could be great, and Massasoit might say, whatever.
Well, Charlie Wall was going to be here tonight, couldn't make it because of the start-up of the school year.
And who is Charlie Wall?
Dr. Wall is the president of Massasoit Community College, who is very much involved with us. Massasoit Community College already has a jobs in marine trades program at its Canton campus. Massasoit has worked with Stellwagen Bank to do a program now, in its third year, for jobs in marine research. So Dr. Wall is very much involved with this. We have the issue of the chicken and the egg right now, in that they cannot make a commitment to a building until there is a building, because they have to address issues with state agencies that are responsible for choosing where they do their programs. Dr. Wall has indicated to me that he would like me and other members of the board to come to address the Massasoit board, to tell them about this as well, and to get them on board. So we have this, we have a little bit of a dance that we're going to have to do, because we don't have anything firm and paper, although Dr. Wall's been on TV with me and Jack indicating his commitment to this, and he's been before the selectmen and is willing to do that as much as necessary to help make this happen. But we don't have it on paper, and are not likely to have that until we get to this point where we...
So do we need any motion or anything tonight? Or are these sort of actions that you're talking about, of course, if it's coming before town meeting, there'll be formal warrant articles and all that sort of stuff? Is that the timeframe that things need to be? Do we need to say something like, now we intend to do anything, or what? And I'm asking this of Patricia as well as yourself.
I think that this is to bring the board up to speed on how much progress has been made, as Jeff said, in a relatively short period of time. I think the board needs to discuss among itself the pros and cons of the project relative to its tax-exempt status, which I spoke with Jeff about and they're aware of. So we have both, we're working on our end, but I think what they're looking for tonight is a reaffirmation that the board supports the project, and that it's a matter of going through the necessary hoops to secure all the different things that they still need to do and to tie up some things at our end, so that we're in a position where maybe other committees are going to do this.
And what is the nature of our expression of affirmation?
Is that the...
Yes, okay. Which is fine, but I just wanted to make sure that if it needs to be, if it's sufficient to be a sense of the board, or if there's other things, or what? Just so I know what time, what we're after here.
It'd be, I think, sufficient to say that the board likes the idea, we liked it a year and a half, or two years ago, we certainly like it now, and we encourage you to go to the next step. Would that be safe to say? Would that be a synopsis of whatever that next step might be?
Fine.
Fine.
Okay? You certainly do, and I...
My sense is if it keeps going on this track, you know, we do have to gather all the information and do, perform due diligence, but I think this is all pretty much what we were conceiving of, and in fact, better than that.
More than I was thinking of. Norman, before we wrap it up?
Are you looking to tie the building into a super treatment plan?
Yes. From an educational, oh, you mean as far as physically tied in?
Physically tied in. Is this going to be part of the super system, or are you looking at putting in your own plan?
That's an excellent question, and we don't have the answer to that right now. It's just too soon to know. But we want to keep all our options open.
If this is going to be a school, it's going to be a large lease?
We're anticipating as many as 200 students at any one time, and that eventually it will serve us up to 1,200, maybe 1,500 students a semester. So, yeah, it would be a significant use.
That's exactly the sort of thing they're going to be figuring out.
Thank you. I think, I know the committee that you have is a good one. I've known Ed from years ago, and Jack. We know the input that he gives and Tom. Every committee needs an engineer, I think, someone to keep it going. And I think everyone would agree, and Don also, I think everyone would agree that you're the engineer with this project, you've got this moving along, and you've got it to where it is now. I think a year and a half or two years ago, when this was proposed, it was a proposal that no one had much idea where it was going to go. But this is fantastic to see it here today with the way it is. So congratulations to all of you, but to Jeff in particular.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, if I could, Jeff, you might want to speak to the gentleman in the back row with the blue squared shirt on. Yes, Dr. Fusco. I'll talk, just, if you guys could just compare some notes afterwards.
Happy to.
Yep.
Take a second, Mike.
Thank you. Pat? Pat would like to come up if we can, we've been jumping all around here, but since you're here, we'll...
Excuse me, I'm wondering if the drain layer is...
Is the drain layer here? I don't believe he is. If I could direct your attention to Sister City number 12, agenda item number 12.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thanks very much.
Jack, see you later.
See ya.
Pat, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Fine, thank you.
If you would just introduce yourself and briefly explain why you're here, and I can pick it up from here. I know a little bit about this myself, so...
Okay. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, and I'm really continuing a discussion that took place several months ago, when Joe Norton proposed the idea of an initiative which we think would be very interesting for the town. I think the idea involves the future establishment of a sister city status between the town of Situate and the town of Soucy-en-Brie in France, where we have had an ongoing exchange for almost a decade. I think when it was presented to you, the idea, the germ of the idea, when it was presented several months back, you were favorably disposed towards exploring the possibility. And I am here this evening with Joe to tell you where we are in the process and see, and hope that you're going to continue to support this initiative. We are not at the point right now of actually signing a pact as a sister city, because we still have a good bit of work to do. But just to give you a little background, and many of you probably know this already, but the French students of Situate High School have had a longstanding tradition of an exchange with various schools, high schools in France, which goes back to the 19, early 1980s, where French students come to the United States for 10 days to two weeks, are hosted by American families, and then our students go to France and are hosted by French families. And we just find that the Spanish students also have a similar exchange. And we find that it is a life-altering experience for the students, and one that we hope will go on for many years to come. Almost a decade ago, we did establish a relationship with the town of Soucy-en-Brie, which is a town of about 25,000 inhabitants. The school is called, interestingly enough, Christopher Columbus High School, and, which was opened in 1992. And we have been having exchanges with them since, our relationship with them, and then finally exchanges since the early 2000s. This town is located just outside of Paris, so it's an ideal location, I think, for our students to go to. And the partnership has been so successful that two years ago, when we had our last exchange, all of the American and French students and the French host families were invited by the mayor to come to the town hall and to attend a reception, be welcomed by the town, and also to meet members of their international committee. This town has exchanges, our sister city relationships with, I think, four other towns in various places in the world, so they have good experience with it. We were really interested in the idea of having a broader connection between the two towns. We find certain similarities that do exist, although they're not on any ocean, of course. But we get along very well, and we like the idea of the fact, of what it could bring to Situate, as far as residents of Situate of all ages being able to engage themselves in some kind of a partnership with certain groups in Soucy-en-Brie. So to get to the present, on October 13th, 43 students from France are arriving in Situate with three teachers, and they will be hosted by both Situate French students and Cohasset French students. With them will be a delegation from the city of four to five elected officials who are involved with the cultural aspects of the town, and especially the exchanges. They're going to spend about five days here and get to know Situate, and explore the possibilities of a relationship. And I thought, Joe, you could...
Yeah. If I try to pick up from here, this delegation that would be here would be touring Situate, and I believe Cohasset also. Pat has been in contact with the Historical Society, with Dave Ball, and he'll be involved, hopefully, to take them around to some of the historical sites. Chamber of Commerce has been notified they're going to be part of it. There'll be a reception on, help me out, October...
16.
16, Saturday, where the officials will be probably at the GAR Hall, is that...
We're looking into either the GAR or the high school, where all of the participating exchange folks will be present, and interested groups in the town, to have some sort of an official ceremony, not exactly establishing a sister city status, but the approving the process to go forward.
Welcoming the officials that are here from France, and then hosting somewhat of a reception that you would host. I might say that Pat's done yeoman's work on all this project from the beginning. And hopefully, a selectman, or two or three, would be able to attend that day and welcome the group from France. And anything else we could add to it? That's what really is being asked of us. As Pat said, the actual signing of any formal documents is probably a year away, if not more, and that would...
And I know the mayor of Soucy will not be coming at this time, but would definitely be present here. They would also like to invite members of, various members of our town who are going forth with the project to accompany us in February, when we go to Soucy. And I think it could be a very interesting experience. We've also contacted the art associations, particularly right now, South Shore Art Center, and I'm trying to get into contact with sporting groups, the Rotary Club as well, and music groups, and any help or suggestions, because I know you all know more different, more constituencies in town that might be interested in doing this. We did have three families from Soucy-en-Brie who came this summer, who were on a vacation in New England and decided to explore Situate. One of the families hosted a student of ours four years ago, and it was a great experience for him. And another one is one of the elected officials who will be coming. And they were very favorably impressed by Situate. We went to the beach, we, you know, toured around the town, we talked a little bit about the history, we had a tour of the lighthouse, and they were already coming up with ideas, house exchanges, different, various cultural activities. The persons that we met at the South Shore Art Center talked about the possibility of, you know, an international exposition on a particular theme that we could periodically do. So that's where we are right now.
Good. Comments from the board? I'm just...
I think this is great. I mean, more power to you.
I mean, I'm a college professor in my day job, and I can't tell you how many times I've had undergrads, when I'm talking with them, talk about the value of exchange programs that they did, and they had someone living in their house with them for a semester or something back when they were in eighth grade or 10th grade or something like that. And the cultural broadening that this brings to the students and to the townspeople alike is just fantastic. And so I think this is a great thing to do.
And what I'd like to add, just one little thing, on the possibilities, I think, are endless, and it doesn't have to be a costly, really, experience, because of the fact that the idea usually is that whoever travels is hosted by families in the town. So it's really the airfare.
Right.
I think I'd ask you two, as we go along now, to keep in touch with either myself or John, the chairman of the board, and with the exact place, time, we know the date, I think, the 13th, but whether it'll be the high school. And we can get back to you with letting you know who will be able to attend, and any other thoughts that we come up with, as you suggested, groups, organizations that might would like to be involved, we could put you in touch with them, probably.
I appreciate it.
And I think, again, thank you for all the work you've done on it from the beginning.
Welcome. If you have established an international committee here in Situate, I'd love to be at it.
First meeting will be in Paris.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very encouraged.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just leave a couple of pieces of information.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you. Thank you. Pat, thank you. As we move along, grain layers license, is that, anyone here for that yet? Doesn't appear to be. We've done the master soy, we'll be going along here. I guess the Economic Development Committee.
I think they're ready.
Yep. I think if somebody could just get...
Bill's right outside there.
Bill's right outside the door.
Skip your Watkins. Watkins.
Watkins, anyone? No? Good. Thank you. Anyone welcome to come up, please? Come up and join Bill and...
Is Laura going to join us?
William.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Well, let's just get ourselves together here. This is, did I write it number seven? Number seven.
Is Laura Harbottle going to be joining us tonight?
She, she just stepped out because she saw that, actually, just a moment ago, we had all of the planning board members here except for one, so didn't think she was needed, so she stepped out.
Good. Okay. Data soft, if you would.
Okay. We sent a memo. There's been a lot of discussion talking about economic development and, you know, how we're going to do it and address it, the importance of it. And I think, in fact, the presentation you just saw is leading into it with what the opportunities are out there. And one of the things that, that we've looked at and had discussion with members of not only your board but other boards is coming back up and forming an Economic Development Commission. Now, this is not something new. This has been on the laws and the books since about 1960, '61, something like that. In fact, earlier, the town established such a commission. And they met and they came back and decided it. I think the final report, as I remember it, is something to the effect that due to the remoteness of the town, right, there was little at that point they thought that they could do. I mean, it was pre-trained, that was pre-a lot of things on it. And it just kind of just went the way of a lot of committees have gone, Pat. What we would like to do is to come back up, as stated in the memo, is to reinstate that, was let's reinstate the Economic Development Commission. And what we've done is, we sent you the memo, and I think it pretty well, pretty much straightforward in terms of what the mission is. And then it makes a reference to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section A. It talks about the basis of why and how these commissions can be set up and for the town to adopt it. We then came back and went the next step and said there and says, were we to do this, let's figure out what the roles of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen would be working with this commission. We then came back and sat there and said, let's, let's look at the steps of how it would actually take to reestablish the commission. And then we went one step farther, and I think is an important thing, is to sit there and talk about what we think, suggested goals and objectives for this commission, so that we kind of give them something to look at initially, not to stifle their creativity, but to at least give them a shopping list of things that, from the planning board and the conversations that we've had, seem to be important to us, right, and seem to be important to the town. So this would give them a starting point that they could look at on it. And then the last one is just the process of, of the mechanics of how do we come back up, how do we set up the committee, how long are the terms, how many people would be on it, and how we would go about selecting the members of the committee. Now, that at about 30,000 feet is the summation of, what, half a dozen discussions, if not longer, at the planning board meetings and then subsequent discussions outside of the planning board.
So the first item for us, I guess, would be to reestablish the committee by a vote of the board at a meeting soon, next meeting or the meeting after. Get it going right away, is that your suggestion?
I think the way that, it's a four-step process is the way that we saw. One would be to come back up and, and have your board vote to reestablish the Situit Development Industrial Commission, which is what we would call it. Then two would be to come back up and authorize the planning board to come back up and just scour the countryside, the townside, for candidates. In other words, we would advertise, we would come back up, we would screen the, the candidates, and then in effect provide you with a recommendation of one of all of the applicants that we've had, as well as our recommendation for what we're proposing is to be a seven-member board. We would then come back up, forward all those applications to you. You would physically make the appointment. And at that point, on an ongoing basis, you would continue to make appointments because we're, we're suggesting a three-year term on this committee. And in effect, once we've done that, then to come back up, the committee is formed, the committee would be charged, and the committee would go forward. And then we would, on a, on a quarterly basis, they would come back up to the planning board, and then on an as-needed basis, they would come to you. And then, and on an annual basis, they would provide you with a written report as to, here's where we are, here's what we've done, and here's how, what we've accomplished, and here's what we need to do. So if they need to identify something that requires town action or bylaw changing or zoning changing or something like that, then that would be the way we would initiate the process of it.
So you, they would, they would report to you on a quarterly basis or whatever the case might be? Would? Any questions? Tony?
Well, I thought it was a great document. You know, there's a lot of stuff here. The, the two things that stuck out to me was just the vastness of what we're asking these seven people to do. I mean, the 15 points are just, you know, that's, that's a century's worth of work. But it's all good work. It's all stuff that the town needs to do. I just don't want to give them a task that's going to be overwhelming from day one. So more than likely, you're going to pick one or two of those and say, you know, start in this direction. The other thing is, as the board of selectmen, we talk about this stuff all the time. I think, from what I read, I just would want the board to have more of an active role in it.
This, us, you mean?
Us. Yes. I mean, I, I think, you know, you guys may, may have more hands-on with them, but I think that they should report to us a little bit more, and I just think that we should have a little bit more interaction other than once or twice a year, so that if something is, is pertinent and needs to be done, that it's not, that it's right on our plate and that we're, we're right involved with it as much as possible. Because this is obviously one of the pertinent things for this town to do to, to help move away from the financial crisis that we've been going through and will continue to go through. Those are the two things that, that jumped out to me. And I, like I said, we talk about this every year as a board in terms of what we want the town to do. Yeah, or we formally sit down and write it on a piece of paper. But, but I think it's great to get input from, from seven other people and, and see if we can actually push the initiatives and brainstorm and get other ideas out as quick as possible.
Couple of comments, if I, let me address that.
No.
One is, is you're right about the authorship in the memo. And Dan is the one that kind of put together the straw man for, for us to kind of talk to. And we did talk about a lot of, a lot of the things that, in particular, the two, two points that you raised. But I think what we decided as a board was, let's, let's put a straw man out there and sit there and see, you know, whether there's a buy-in. And if there's a buy-in, then in effect, we can figure out the mechanics of how to make it work better, or how to make it work more efficiently when you've got two boards involved, right? So, you know, speaking for the board, which I do on occasion, I don't think we have a problem with, with, with the ownership in terms of where, where the responsibility has to lie or the interaction with the two boards. I think, but, but what I would, would ask is that we kind of define it. Is that, you think that's a fair assessment?
Yeah. And I didn't mean that by pushing you aside. I'm just saying, I want to be closer, or this board should be closer, whether, whatever the makeup of it is, to deal with whatever, whatever the issues are quickly.
To help.
I think that's a great idea. I think that our initial take on it was, we didn't want to keep a lot of extra work on you as well, so we were sort of...
Oh, we're not going to do the work.
You're going to do the work.
We say work.
But I, I think the more involved you are, the better it's going to be and more chance of success because ultimately, a lot of these changes, you're going to have to go through town meeting if any big recommendations come out. We're really going to need the support of all the boards, the whole community, to do this.
And I saw the liaison from each, from each group.
I'm sure that we'll be able to, to work with, with you people to come up with a, an answer to Tony's concerns. I think it's, that everybody, everybody can live with, you'll be happy with, and we'll be happy with, so I would say.
Yeah, I wouldn't even call it a concern. It's just something that said, boy, we, we should be very closely involved with this also. Because the only other thing that struck me is all the people that applied for the Pier 44 Committee. And I, unfortunately, I missed the first part of the meeting. But I would hope that some of those, I mean, there's only going to be so many people, and we got so many applicants there, that some of those people would be interested in this committee because a lot of the background that they had were comparable.
Yeah, they were, they were good.
So, you know, we may have a pool of 20-something people that may be, you know, in, on the bandwagon already.
That's, that's an important point, and we've talked about it, is that the, the way that this thing works and works effectively is to have the right people there. Because if you don't have the right people, then you're going to, you're going to flounder around for a while until you get the right people. But as I say, I think we kind of defined what we were looking for in terms of what we saw as a skill set. And I think if we get, we get that group of people, and they're out there. They, they really are. I think we've all talked to them one way or the other, and it's, you know, I'd really like to get involved, but I've got Little League, I've got hockey, and I've got soccer, and I really don't have any time other than that. But I think there's, there's an opportunity here. I think if you step back and look at it, what the benefit is to the town to get someone to spend, you know, a fair amount of time, I think would be, they'd be willing to do that.
And I think a lot of this came out of, you know, we started our discussions, I think, back in May of this year, but, you know, with everything going through town meeting and discussions about, you know, we're not able to pave the driveway of the fire station, and we have to let go of so many teachers, and those types of conversations. I mean, I think everybody needs to make time for this type of thing. We have a lot of very smart people that live in town. A lot of people that work outside of the town have big jobs. This is their area of specialty. And I think we really need to find a way to convince them to volunteer some time. I know everyone here, no one has time for these positions. We all have outside interests and kids and jobs and all of that, but I can't think of anything more important than trying to establish the economic viability of the town long-term to support, you know, not just the schools but our infrastructure and our quality of life. So, you know, I'm looking at you and everyone to come up with names of who the best people are in town. Some of those people are going to be non-traditional, you know, people that didn't volunteer in the past for things. But, you know, I'm hoping that we actually do some affirmative outreach to those people to try to say, you know, come meet once a month on this committee, and let's harness some of that power to, you know, help out the town.
You say they're out there. We found it earlier tonight in, in listening to some of the people who applied for the Pier 44 Committee. And it's, they're, they're out there. These are very, very qualified people.
And I think it's also good for them to know that if they get involved in it, they have the support of
Yeah.
our board and your board to actually take action on ideas. So...
Wait, do you have a comment?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you all for, for doing all this. This is great stuff. I also wanted to just, particularly since he's not here, but just acknowledge the role of, of John Denehy, who's also worked closely with you and has really pushed this. He's at, he's at a work-related event tonight. Won't be able to join us, but I just wanted to point that out to people watching. John, his name is in this memo quite a lot, and, and he's been working with you guys, as you know. So I wanted to draw attention to John on that. One of the questions I had for you is sort of picking up on Mr. Norton's questions of, of Mr. Rosen earlier on. What do you need from us now? And in, for example, we can reestablish this, the Situit Development and Industrial Commission, which just for the people out there watching and listening, it has to be called that by state bylaw. We'll refer to it, something less tongue-twisting, the Situit Economic Development Commission or something. But the formal name, do we need to, can we just do that part of it now? Should we do that part of it now, or do you, would you rather us wait?
I would think it would have to be an agenda item.
Yeah, I, I'm going to suggest that it go something like this. And then, one is, is if, if you give us a sense, and, and I, and I get that, that it's something that you, that your board is willing to pursue, let's work out the, the verbiage that sits there and says, here's how the boards then react, so we've got that defined.
So do it all later.
Right, so we can do that. And then I says, once, once we've reached that, then in effect, I think it's just a matter of establishing the committee and then asking us to go through the interview process.
Tony made a very good point about 15 points being, you know, taking a century's worth of work. But I take a little bit of a different angle on it than does Tony, I think, in that I like seeing that all out there, just as long as you acknowledge that, and everybody acknowledges that, we're not going to get it done in the first year. But, so people understand, we're just, this is not an ad hoc committee. This is going to be a standing committee of the town that's going to go, hopefully, forever. And there'll be three-year terms, and it'll be just like every other committee in town that does this. So I, I kind of like the idea of having, at this point, you know, a broad net with the understanding that you'll be working on some of these this year and the next year, and some things will come on and off the list. So when we get, we get down to it, I think that's, that's sort of a good thing. And then my, my last comment was just sort of a piece of advice, and I sort of mentioned this before. But there's a lot of words in here about attracting new businesses, and that's fantastic, obviously. I'd also like to see more sort of explicit acknowledgement about attracting more customers and, and more people and ways of marketing our town and getting more people to come, even just to the extant businesses. And I just, here you go, Sean. Sean, I'm going to say the word, I'm going to say the word waterways, Sean. But, you know, I draw back on my waterways experience. I was just down at Cole Parkway this weekend, and I had a, a local businessman come up to me, and I said, you know, how's it going for businesses? And he said, well, it was a tough year. If it wasn't for the transient boaters, we were going to be dead. And so, and I see Krutzberg in the back of the room here. He's been banging this drum for a long time. I mean, getting transient boaters in drives a lot of front street, and not just boaters, but if you can get, to take the bigger picture, ways of getting people to come to our town, instead of going to Cohasset, much as we love our northerly neighbors, or instead of going to Marshfield, much as we love our southerly neighbors and all that sort of thing. But in addition to attracting new businesses, we've got great businesses already. How can we help the current merchants to help drive the economy in that way? So I'd like to see that sort of embedded in there, just a little more overtly. And then everything else, I agree with my colleagues.
You say you might have an answer or comment?
Sure. I'm Eric Mercer. I'm a member of the board. We've talked about this actually in some detail. And perhaps one of the first issues that we should make reference to is that the, the priority items on the action list for the Economic Development Commission just suggests that we should let the commissionless organizers decide what they need, what they feel they need to do first and know expert opinion at that point. One of the, one of the first things we'd like to see, which is what's referred to as a business improvement district, another creature of staff. And it's, it's focused directly on those issues. And that's one of the first things we'd like to see in the process. Some of the things we've talked about at the commission are the fact that our, our businesses need to become more aggressive and more competitive with our neighbors. The fact of the matter is, business in town here is a zero-sum game. Every dollar that we collect in the town of Situit is a dollar that the center and towns don't get, and vice versa. And we need to become very aggressive.
I like that.
The ability of our town to survive rests on that. We need to build schools and infrastructure, all those kinds of things. My business depends on my neighbors and their business on me. And so those are some of the things that we're talking about as a, as a board that we need to see happen. So we're on the same sheet of paper, and we're going to do everything we can to make that happen.
That's great. Perfect.
So I guess, as I understand it, we're going to, we put on the agenda to formally vote?
The committee, reestablish, or however we're going to phrase it.
Yeah.
And we'll do that, Kim. And that's, that's going to be a very relatively quick agenda item, so... Why don't we put on, let's get going on it. We're going on the 21st.
And would that include an authorization for us to begin to screen potential members at the same time?
If...
Why don't we think about it, and we can talk about it?
Yeah. On the 21st, we may just say, we, we vote to reauthorize it and put out the word that you guys are looking for. We'll talk about it at that time.
We'll certainly post that there's positions.
And will you give us a due date for the, for the return on the people that we proposed at that same point in time?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
It would probably be...
Do you want to make sure that nothing falls between the cracks and that it's done?
I would say that 21st, within a month, six weeks of tonight, you probably would have the applications in any way. would have the applications in any way, and...
Some of this stuff can move at the same time. I mean, for example, if we re-establish you, and then, at that point, we say we're, or we say you guys are going to be looking for candidates, it's going to take two or three weeks. You've got to give candidates two or three weeks to reply, and then, in those intervening two or three weeks, we're going to have another meeting, we can sort of figure out some of the details of the people going to be applying.
Six weeks can be fast, you know, just...
But I think, once, it's going to be, Eric, but once we've got it established, then we can do our, kind of being proactive in terms of looking for people.
Yeah. But I said, as I said earlier, if our experience tonight was any indication, you know, you're going to find more than your share of applicants, good ones, hopefully. Thank you.
Mr. Harris has a question.
Mr. Harris has a question.
What zoning board of appeals, what role will they have, and should they be as active as the two of us? I...
I don't think we carved out any specific role for the zoning board of appeals. They think of, the role of the selectmen is obvious, you know, things to do with budget or town bylaw changes and things.
Well, the reason I ask, and maybe you don't look at it like I am, but one recommendation might be for this group to re-zone a certain area in town, spots, will they be very involved in that, unless I'm going down the wrong road?
That typically would be more either the planning board or the selectmen initiating those things. We'd certainly look for input from them. There's a lot of expertise there, certainly, but the planning board's actually charged with the economic development section of the town master plan.
Uh-huh.
There's actually an existing section that has to be looked at there, so, you know, it somewhat falls within our realm already.
So, you wouldn't think they'd have a role at all in this?
I think we'd look for their expertise. I'm not sure, they're not the traditional ones to do those types of changes, I don't believe.
I think it would be as an as-needed basis.
All right. Okay.
But they would have a history of potential requests for variances or that related to a business that could provide an input into the members of the committee.
All right.
I mean, I think the more the merrier, too. I mean, if, you know, if they'd have good input into the process, you know, we could certainly have them involved in some aspect as well.
Well, we have two weeks to get their feedback.
Yeah.
Well, it's just a thought.
No, I mean, it's a good point.
Very good point.
Maybe they need a liaison also, like we and they.
I would think so, but, you know, maybe I'm looking at it differently than you guys, you know?
I think one of the things that's on the shopping list, if you would, is to come back up and hold a forum, so we can bring those people that are involved, as well as the community at large, to come back up and sit there and make sure that we're all looking at kind of the same issues, or at least have an understanding of what the issues are that they perceive.
Yeah, I think you need that every year.
Oh, absolutely.
Part of your standing orders, you know, part of your standing operating procedure. Every year, you've got a meeting or two in public where you get people coming out of the woodwork and throwing crazy ideas at you, and some of them actually work. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, a lot of it's about brainstorming, and that's why we wound up with such a long list of initial tasks, was not that we expected to do all that right now, but, so, these are ideas, and once it gets formed, they can pick and choose and prioritize. But you're right, it is, you know, fifty years' worth of work.
No, it's good, it's good, but, I mean, if you can get, if you can get one or two done in a grouping, that'd be a huge success.